Everybody, calling to order this meeting, North Andover School Committee, seven o'clock P. M., regular session Tuesday, April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to begin, please join me with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey. Anyone, it's a public comment now, if anyone would like to make a public comment? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, move to the items of business. We have new business tonight. First read and vote to, well, first we'll have to suspend the rules and then do a first read and vote on a potential letter to the N. A. Community regarding the budget deficit. And then the second part of the meeting will be informational report on the projected budget deficit from our assistant superintendent. And that's it. So, I think if we would like to discuss, say, I think we need, I think we need to suspend rules.
We can discuss the letter first and then
Decide.
And then do all the voting, suspension of the stuff first afterwards.
All right, so if that's, then in that case, I will try to project it.
Do you want it to go on the screen?
Yeah.
Go to save and share.
I'm using the H. M. I. Cable.
Do I just have to switch this to H. D. M. I.?
Bear with me, I had all these things closed before. All right, so I've taken the liberty of fellow committee members to draft a letter to the families that I would like everybody to review. Oh, I have hard copies of them too.
And Mr. Chairman, the purpose of this letter would be a letter from the committee that goes out to all the, goes to all the parents?
It goes, actually, the, the purpose would be twofold. One would be, well, the destination would be twofold. One would be to be sent to families in the school system. And the other would be to post on the website so that people that are not families in the school system but that are citizens have a chance to see it. This is exactly what you're looking at, it's just hard copy, might be a little easier to read.
Presumably you'd send it to media as well. You want everybody to see it.
So everyone take a moment to read it.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
If there are any extra copies to the
Show. I'll give one to the public.
There's an extra.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read it.
I can share it to you.
Can you, switch it a little better?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, definitely, yeah.
Just the public, please note, it's in draft form.
Certainly, thank you. I'll be sure to stay happy to return.
That's okay.
So, in the interest of folks watching, I'll, in a minute, I'll scroll so they can see the rest of it. All right, I'll start to scroll it so people can see the rest of it. This is, folks at home can see what we see on the screen, right? Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think they can do both, but they either see it behind you or I think they can actually focus on it.
Mr. Chair, are you willing to entertain a question?
Absolutely, this, this is a discussion period right now.
So, my understanding, which could be incorrect, but I think isn't, is that in a, in a way, this whole problem does not impact the vote at town meeting because we have agreed with the selectmen in effect that the amount that's going to be appropriated is the same amount that was agreed to whenever you guys did the budget in the first place.
I think you're, I think you're right, Mr. Mastovitz, in that we're asking for the same amount. The impact could be whether or not the public changes their mind or how the public wants to vote for us to have that amount.
Well, but I think it would be helpful to say that we have not, we are not expecting more money now than we were expecting before.
Mm-hmm.
And, and so, in the, given how town meetings and budgets usually work, that probably means that there isn't going to be a vote on town meeting to make changes as a result of what happened.
Changes to the total dollar amount, I think that makes it mean in front of us we, if that's true, mean in front of us we kind of
Yeah, so we could, we could add a line in that says, at town meeting, we will still, we will still bring to town meeting the same number that was approved by the school committee and the select board and the thing com.
Yep, how about this, our, well, I can
And then you could, you could clarify that by saying that because we have been spending at a rate higher than we anticipated when this figure was arrived at, there will be consequences, we can't do everything we thought we could do, but those won't play out in town meeting. And we don't have any intention of asking for more, right?
No.
Correct.
And I don't think anybody has any intention of giving us less, so. I think
A clarifying sentence.
I think a clarifying sentence is appropriate. I don't know what other people's intentions during town meeting could be, as we saw last night.
Right, but I think your point is it would, you're suggesting we add a sentence to the effect of that, you know, our intent is not to ask for more money, just to be clear, right?
Yeah, I think that, yeah, we're not asking for more, this is about this, what, what the services or lack thereof to the students will be, it's really what we're trying to do.
Yeah, we're going to ask for the same amount, we have to make adjustments to the services offered.
And then you could say that we are, of course, as we're going to later this evening, working with the administration about what form the cuts will take, how much, what form, so.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, I have received a message that people at home cannot see it on the screen.
Oh, okay.
So I don't know if you want to, it's blurry. They can't see it now, but, well, it was blurry, so whether or not you want to read it or continue to deliberate is your choice.
Maybe they just feel that that's better than looking at us.
Maybe.
Well, I'll do two things. I'll, I'll enlarge it even further, which might help, and then I'll read it and scroll as I read it, okay? So I think that's appropriate. So it says, this is a draft, a letter intended to go to school families and citizens, well, it'll be posted so citizens can read it. It says, Dear North Andover Public Schools Families, we are writing to you today to update you on the status of the recently discovered North Andover Public Schools budget deficit for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four budget, as well as the impact of that on the planned fiscal year twenty-five budget that will be voted upon at town meeting in a couple of weeks. Most importantly, we want to assure you that as a school committee, we are working diligently and directly to address these problems and that our highest priority is to ensure that the education of our children continues at the highest quality for the remainder of this school year and into the next. The impact of this deficit, as well as the burden it has placed on our community, are serious matters that must be further explored. Following the best practices in situations like this, it was appropriate to place the superintendent on fully paid administrative leave so that an independent review conducted by a neutral third party could be made into the matter. The superintendent receives full compensation and benefits during this time period, and the administrative leave is not punitive.
Nor presum, and contains no presumption.
Let me read the draft and then we can comment, okay? At the April twenty-fifth meeting, many statements were made that inaccurately portrayed the situation as well as the actions of the committee. In the coming days, we plan to clarify and address many of those statements. We appreciate the community having patience as we work together in the best interests of the district. We intend for this review to be conducted as soon as practically possible and to be completed as soon as possible. Among the goals of the review is to ensure that this does not repeat in the future, to determine how such a large deficit could not be discovered and identified sooner, whether our financial systems that are in place are adequate or need improvement, and whether any changes in our organizational structure are necessary. The school committee was notified in the February first meeting that there was pressure on the budget and about one point five million dollars of expenses that were anticipated to be in excess of their budgeted amounts. The next notice of a problem was not until April seventeenth, and the scope is much larger. A net three point one million dollar deficit remains after additional offsets of one point five million to the school budget are taken. We have already sought bids from professional consulting services firms to conduct a complete review of the situation. We intend to engage a firm as soon as possible to begin this work and, and, it says act, but I meant to say ask, that it be completed as soon as possible. The deliverable will be a comprehensive written report of their findings, conclusions, and recommendations. We want to assure the public that if staff reductions become necessary, we will be fully transparent as to the process used to determine those reductions. Ms. Pamela Lathrop, presently our assistant superintendent of teaching and learning, has agreed to serve as acting superintendent for this interim period. Ms. Lathrop is an accomplished educator and administrator, and we ask that you support her and the professional administrative staff during this challenging period of time. Sincerely, North Andover School Committee.
I just have a couple of small things.
Sure.
So just where in the one, two, the, the third paragraph, where it talks about, among the goals, the review.
Yep.
And it says whether our financial systems, I would just, I'm not sure where exactly this belongs, but checking also the, just the financial processes between the school committee and administration that we have, that all the right checks and balances and that we're, that we're working, all of us are working correctly and appropriately as it goes around the budget, so really just verifying all those processes are in place too. You know, if there's something we should be doing that we're not, that should show up here too.
Okay.
So financial systems and processes.
Would that do it of?
I, I think so, and process, as long as we, you know, it's in the scope of the work, right?
Yep.
And then the only other, he got that one, so just, and then in the one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, where it says, we want to assure the public that if staff reductions become necessary.
Mm-hmm, we'll know soon.
We'll know soon, I'm just wondering, you know, is it stronger than if? Again, and I'm asking that question, we haven't had that discussion yet, but I would just, you know, if we know it's stronger than an if, I would, maybe we'll know that as we go through, more through this meeting, that this language reflects the best we know when it goes out, because in terms of the discussions, at least, whatever the days of blurred, but last week, Wednesday, it seemed like that was a stronger than an if for staff reductions.
I agree with Kelly about that.
Okay.
We know there are going to be some, we should say so.
Okay.
And I just think, Mr. Chair, to Ed's point earlier, we should put a sentence in the first, the first paragraph that, as well as the impact on the planned fiscal year that we voted on in town meeting in a couple of weeks, the, at town, the town and school committee intend, will present the same budget as voted on in February two thousand and twenty-three.
Maybe you should, maybe friendly, suggest maybe, okay, bottom line budget number or?
Bottom, yeah, it's going to be the same bottom line, right?
Yeah, same bottom line budget, right?
And I'm, and I know this is an awkward, weird thing for everyone to get to watch us wordsmith this, but since it is coming from the entire school committee, we have to have this discussion in
In public, right.
The chair could have sent out a letter on his own, but decide that some coming from everybody and having a discussion was more appropriate.
That's
So we have to do it in front of everyone, making it weird and awkward, but that's the way it is, to make sure that we are meeting our open meeting law obligations.
So I guess I would add to what Joe said, that, that we should then say that, that this will mean reductions in programmatic spending in the coming year and we're working on them. Because it, to just say, without saying that, to say that the bottom line doesn't change,
Okay.
It doesn't convey the whole situation.
Okay, thinking about logistics, what the best way to proceed is, would it make sense to suspend this, I'm just thinking out loud, I guess, would it make sense to suspend this discussion until we have the next one so that we're certain that budget reductions are coming?
That makes sense, actually, yes, that's a good idea.
We can move to another item on the agenda and come back to it.
All right, so, but before we do that, does anyone else have immediate sort of suggestions?
I have two. I, I think it would be helpful to say that the unpaid leave comes without prejudice. It does not signal anything about our intentions, one way or another.
So at the end of, after punitive, after, not punitive, say, and, and further?
And without prejudice.
And without prejudice, okay.
Oh, and the other thing is, unless we've changed our mind, I think it would be helpful to say that we've asked the town manager to work with us in organizing the selection process for this study.
Okay.
We have, right?
Yes.
So we should say so.
So we have, oh, okay. I'm thinking maybe paragraph one, two, three, four.
Well, you say in paragraph three, this review, where did we first mention the review? Oh, up there. Yeah, so we tend to, this review with the assistance of the town manager.
Okay.
In the first line of the paragraph. You can just open it with
Before, before the words we intend, you mean?
Yep.
So what did you suggest there?
With the assistance of the town manager.
Ah, with the assistance of the T. M.
And I'm, we, we'll make some, we might need to make some substantial changes or substantiative, I guess is the word, changes afterwards, but if there's any other small grammatic errors, I will allow the chair to make those
Corrections.
Final edits before it gets sent out.
Okay.
Yeah, so I have a couple of other small ones. The, the wording about, the next notice of a problem was not till April seventeenth, and the scope is much larger, and that three point one million deficit remains after additional offsets of one and a half million of the school budget are taken. I think I understand what that means, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, and I'm guessing that ninety-five percent of the people will be really confused by that. My understanding, correct or not, is that the deficit got to be something like five million, but between the manager and, and Dr. Mealy, they were able, able to identify increases in revenues, and so the net problem went up from a million and a half to whatever.
Three point one.
Right, I mean, getting into the details about offsets, who knows what an offset is?
Well, we could just strike the words after three point one deficit remains.
I think you could actually just leave that out. The problem was thought to be one and a half million in February or January, and two months later, it was three point one million. Is that, that's basically right, isn't it? Just numbers, I, I don't think
So you're suggesting striking the language that says after additional offsets?
Unless somebody disagrees, I don't, I think it just confuses things and doesn't really tell people anything that, that's important.
All right, so we can come back and, we have to agree on the final wording, but I've not
Of course.
Okay, so I made that note, I've, I've taken notes on everything everyone suggested and
No, it's fine.
I'll live type it in there, we can look at the final product and all that.
The other thing I was going to comment on is, is a lot of people obviously feeling, feel very strongly about this, the sentence, following the best practice in situations like this, it was appropriate to place the superintendent, that it doesn't really explain things. I mean, one of the things that happened is there was extensive consultation with town council, right? Rumor has it the two of you spent a lot of time talking and it was very productive and helpful, so, do you see what I'm getting at? What is, what is it you wanting, or what are we wanting to say there, and does this really communicate this?
We should just say what we said there.
But, but think about somebody who, who doesn't do this stuff on a daily basis, what are they going to, what are, what are they going to assume it means when we say, following best practice?
I just make, I don't
Following best practices and options available to us, right?
Well, I mean, the first thing is that we went to town council and said, what is the law?
Can, can I, can I, since town council's president, can I ask you to comment?
Sure. The, I think, sorry. I think since that aspect of your letter, Mr. Chairman, it begins
Actually, sorry, Christine, you should announce who you are and
Oh, sure, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Christine O'Connor, Town Council.
Thank you.
I think because that aspect of your letter is, it's, it's simply stating a, a fact on one hand regarding personnel status, but I would caution the committee about not venturing too far beyond anything that you might have included here. And if, if you wanted to have any, you know, deeper discussions, as I understand this, this is just, this is a letter to communicate to school families, really, in terms of a, of a status of, of this situation, situation being a significant budget deficit. Included in, in that is a matter of paid leave, but I, I think you need to, to be cautious about having any really further discussions in terms of discussing a personnel matter.
So in that vein, in that vein, council would be appropriate then, that we say, following the best practices in situations like this, the superintendent and strike it was appropriate?
That would be fine.
Should we not mention that we consulted with you as to how to proceed?
Well
Or what the contract requires?
If, if you, if you wish to include that there was, that there was consultation with town council, that's fine, but again, I, I would focus really on what the, what the point of the letter is and, and be very hesitant about going too far afield. I'm not, I, I understand what you're, what you're trying to get at, I think, that this was not, the chair didn't take just random rash action on his own, but again, not everything needs to be fully explained when you're dealing with some of these issues. There are constraints, and sometimes you frankly don't get to explain everything that you would like to explain to the public because there are reasons why, why we can't, and I think this is one of these cases where there's just, you know, there are other parties involved in this, they have, you know, they have their own rights as well, and, and I think that we should really just stick to the, to the overriding function of the, of the letter and letting, letting members of the community know, have more information into this current situation.
I think that seems appropriate.
So would you think, just leave that sentence as is then? Okay.
I, I would, I think that's sufficient.
Are we?
So I had just a couple of comments.
Go ahead.
So you had put in there, at the April twenty-fifth meeting, many statements were made that were, that inaccurately portrayed the situation as well as the actions of the committee. It's very vague on, on who you're referring to, are you referring to the committee?
By the public, no, by the public.
So it's public statements.
Yeah, so I should say, yeah, that's a good, good catch, many statements, many public, well, many statements were made by the public, during public comment, made during public comment, that's clearer, that's, was my intent, yeah.
And then you put the next notice of the problem was not until April seventeenth. I know some of us did not find out until after that date, so I don't know if that's when the chair was first notified, but I, I know the entire committee was not advised of the problem on that date.
Yeah, so that's true.
Would it be appropriate to then refer to the Friday?
The, the nineteenth.
The nineteenth.
And I would, to be completely clear, then I should say, the next notice of a problem to the committee was not until April nineteenth. Is that accurate?
No.
No, because the committee, we, it never actually came, communicated last Wednesday, right?
Right.
But obviously, we knew before that.
We actually never received formal notification.
Until the twenty-fifth.
Yeah, but what's the point, like, but we, we knew, like, we had
We didn't know until
Well, we knew, and most of us either attended or watched later, the
The select board meeting.
To the, the select board, which is where we were sort of formally notified.
Well, I can tell you that, okay, so the notice to the public was, was actually when, when the select board agenda was posted.
So we should
Which was Thursday, which was that Thursday at about four or five in the afternoon.
But you didn't know from that agenda topic, because I saw that agenda topic before I had a phone call about it, and I didn't know that's what it was.
However, in the agenda topic, there was a link to the town manager's report, and in the town manager's
Oh, it was in the manager's report, okay, but not in the topic.
So we should label it as the eighteenth then.
Is that the Thursday?
That is.
Do we, we don't really need to go into all that at all, do we?
Well, I just
Does it matter?
No, I was just going to say the next note, well, my suggestion would be, we say, the next notice of a problem was not until April eighteenth.
I would agree with that statement.
April eighteenth instead of seventeenth, I'm just suggesting we correct the date.
Okay, sure.
Uh, okay. All right, does anyone else wish to comment about
Well, I'm not
Any of the words?
I, I defer to you in the end, but I don't see the point of the, at the April twenty-fifth meeting statement, why would we get into all that?
Or not.
The statement that many inaccurate statements were made.
I feel that that's, I feel strongly about
I defer to you on this, Mr. Chair.
I feel pretty strongly about that one, because
No, that's fine.
To be quite frank
I agree, you have been fairly accused of things that you didn't do.
Correct, I felt quite, that felt like some of that was quite personal and unfair, so
And I have just another comment, you put in, the coming days, we plan to clarify and address many of those statements, as you know, we cannot individually, as school committee members on an individual basis, make statements to the public, what were you meaning to say in upcoming meetings, or?
Oh, I'm sorry, let me, let me find it again, I know what you're talking about, but I got to find it.
At bottom of the second paragraph.
Oh, thanks, okay. So the intent there was that, well, my, what I was thinking of doing was trying to put together an F. A. Q. for the website.
I would just say, we, the committee will provide the public
More details
More details as they become, as they come to light, or they, as they, as necessary.
I would agree with that, Mr. Hicks.
We certainly, you wanted to say that the report will be made public as soon as we receive it?
We might not be able to do that.
And I think we need to work to being transparent throughout the process as well.
Oh, yes.
To the extent possible.
Right.
Of course, so, so what I was getting at with that particular sentence was that, that we, what I wanted to do was put some, just put some facts out there
Yep.
That we weren't prepared to, I wasn't prepared to completely
Okay.
Do tonight.
Okay, so I, I wasn't sure what the intent was, because
Yeah.
Obviously, we, this is new to each of us, so
Right, so that's the intent, the intent is to put some kind of F. A. Q. out there, because things were stated at that meeting that were just completely wrong.
So I just say, the school committee will
And, and therefore, with, you know, with no reaction to it, some people will just assume they're right.
Well, that, that was why I made the point that, that I would have said that you, in fact, did not act on your own, that you were, you and the vice chair were very thoughtful and spent a lot of time consulting to each other and with town council and checking the superintendent's contract and decided that under the circumstances
But I think that's getting too far into what town council was saying, we want to We want to stay away from that.
I understand, I understand, but the chair is entitled to some defense, because he's been accused of doing all kinds of things that he didn't do quite unfairly, I think.
I think in that sentence, Mr. Chair, in the coming days, we just say that the school committee will communicate with the public as, as often as necessary to share-
Should we put on there through the, the school committee?
Website.
Web page?
Yeah.
That way people know where to look.
Yep, and we can put the, and it will have, obviously, it'll have accurate information.
Yeah, and whether that's an FAQ, like the chairman suggested, or other methods as we have information, it'll be there.
And then I think we should, we could wordsmith it to death, but I think it's important we get on to the substantial business before us today, which is to talk about the potential budget cuts. So, if we do that, we can come back to this and make any final tweaks that is necessary, Mr. Chair.
That sounds appropriate to me.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll, we'll, we'll go back to the letter later in the meeting and we'll now have part B, which would be the presentation informational, projected FY '25 budget deficit discussion, how to address it.
I think you just need to, oh, there we go.
You got to unplug?
Do I have to unplug?
You're, you're fine.
Doc Millie takes you off.
All right.
Thank you, Chair Brown. We'd like to start by thanking the town manager, her team, as well as the select board and the finance board for their financial support that will allow us to close the gap we have this school year and meet the needs of our district. Tonight, Dr. Millie is going to walk us through the budget again. He'll share with you the corrected projections for FY '24 and then the new projections for FY '25 based on the corrected projection, projections of FY '24. I was mouthful. The overall budget number that you voted in February has not changed, but you will see the new projections have left us with a deficit for FY '25. That's all yours, Dr. Millie.
Okay. Much of this is the same that we discussed preliminarily the other night. So, many of them, many of the items don't change, 403B match activities. Those are based on what we're projecting for FY '24. And then we had talked about the contract services and the electricity and the heating fuel and repairs and maintenance. Those items moving to the facilities budget and that's why our actual budget number is reduced for that. A couple of things that did change. We had under the transportation, some expenses that had been, nope, sorry, it was tuition out of district. Some expenses that had been shown in the operating budget, but they're actually covered by the 240 grant. So, that's been reflected now. And the other one being that you'll see when we show the cuts, the intended cuts, that the TAs had been reflected in the salary other line and is now reflected. That's been increased to reflect the cut down below as the additional cuts.
Two questions, Dr. Millie.
Yep.
Is there a way that we can see this document or have access to, even if it's not the same copy, so we can look and-
Right, it's gonna be linked as soon as the meeting's done.
Okay, so, but there's no way we can see it now, just to-
Um, I could share it with you.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And then question with the out of district tuition. Just wondering, because I know that, that was a large number and certainly changed, I think it was based on the, the increase that, from 2022, in terms of the tuition increase, increase. What are the assumptions that we built in for the 2025 number in terms of the number of students?
For which part?
For, for the out of district.
Right, I'm gonna, I'm actually gonna discuss that.
Okay, that, okay.
Where we got the numbers and the main ones being, the key ones being the salaries and out of district tuition. If you look at the salaries, what we did with those to, to come up with these numbers was to take all of the current employees and carry them forward to next year on the new salary schedules and show them where they would be on the, that new salary schedule. And then we had the leadership team look at all of the employees that, that showed to ensure that either we weren't counting people who weren't going to be here or we're making sure everyone was accounted for. So, they reviewed their own school lists and confirmed, and that's how we settled on the final numbers for what's responsible.
Into that number, have we, how often can a employee apply for a col- column or lane change? And do we have employees who are close to having enough credits to move up to a new column that we should build a buffer in for? So, if like, we know there might be two classes away, it might be reasonable that someone takes two classes in a school year and then they might be, if they do that, the fall, does that change for the, for the spring? And then should we make sure we have a little more in there?
We can take a look to see who's close.
I mean, I mean, one person, that's one thing, but if it's another 10 or 15 people, that might make a, an impact.
Sure, we can take a look at that.
But do people submit things as they go or do people submit it all at once?
Most people submit it as they go, because they want to get the reimbursement that they're eligible for.
Got it.
So, at least you have a good indicator then.
Yes.
Pretty good.
And do we have, is that tracked through like vector or through Power School, so we can actually look through?
We track it through frontline.
Frontline, right.
I wasn't sure what system, so we can, it's not like going through thousands of pieces of paper, but you can do a, hopefully, a report that shows you that.
Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
So, can you just show us the bottom line again, please?
The bottom line of the budget?
Yeah. So, is the FY, first column is what?
On this?
Well, you can just tell us, because then we can look at the numbers. The, the first column is-
Our FY '24 projection, so what we're projecting at this point for FY '24 this year.
So, actual plus forecast.
B is that column.
Correct.
That is B, correct.
And then what is C?
C is the original FY '24 budget.
That we pres, that we, that was, moved forward in February. C is the budget that was voted in February.
So, it's fiscal year '25?
FY '25.
Oh, FY '25.
And D is the, the projections now based on the corrected projections.
The revised FY '25.
Okay, so that suggests that the problem is, has been reduced to 800, I never should do arithmetic in public, but is, is that what you're saying is that the cuts that would need to be made are $800,000 roughly?
No, I'll get there.
He's gonna, he's gonna walk you through these. I think he was just pointing out a couple of things.
Yeah.
Do you want to go through?
Yeah, so, the other one that we talked about, again, most of these stay the same, is the tuition out of district and people would say, why is that number so low? So, basically, how we determine that number is we have the 240 grant, which we are able to cover $583,000 for tuition. And we have the circuit breaker, which we're being told for next year will be $2.6 million. So, you add those two together and we also track with Marcy's office, all of these students that we have and what their placements are and what they're gonna cost for next year, plus the services that are required and the cost of that. And right now, that total is $5,661,000. So, then we take that 500, $5,661-
What was it, 5 million?
661,000.
So, 5.6.
And we take that and we subtract the 583 for the 240 grant, what that covers, and we subtract the 2.6 million that circuit breaker covers and it leaves an obligation to the general fund of $2.5 million. It's a little less than 2.5, but we rounded up just to give ourselves a little buffer.
Just, how much space does that then give us if we were to have a new, a new out of district placement?
Well, so the option-
If that's necessary, if we have to do it.
Yes, it doesn't give us a lot. The option is, in the past, that was the purpose of the special education stabilization fund. So, our two option, and now it's the finance committee reserve fund. So, the option is that you cut more in order to put a buffer into the budget or you rely on the system of covering unanticipated expenses through the reserve.
Just to add to that too, just, I mean, in the last five years, and I can speak before that because I happen to be, have been the out of district person coordinator here for the previous five years, is that out of district tuitions, at least for the last five years, have remained pretty similar. So, on top of what Jim's saying, we also have students that age out of special education and we also have students who come back to district programmatic changes. So, typically, we, I guess, underestimate those areas moving it to have, I mean, if you're asking for a cushion, we don't always know, we hope that kids move back into district, but we don't count on that money necessarily coming forward.
We count on them staying in the placement.
Your plan is for them to stay out of district place and if they come back?
Until we know, until we are, you know, more than 75% confident.
So, there's a little wiggle room there.
There's a little wiggle, there's all, yep.
And, and I just want, and this is no way to cast blame or to make people worried, if an out of district placement is the appropriate choice, then we have to, we should do that. And I do not want that decision to ever be, and I know you would agree with this, I just want to say it for everyone else there, that decision should not be made because of this.
In the over decade I've been, we've never had-
We would never do that, we'd never want to.
Never been a conversation about financial issues in terms of special education needs or student needs.
And I think it's worthwhile, I think it's worthwhile to point out that next year, the $1.5 million finance reserve will be recreated, right? It's re-appropriated. So, I think one of the things you're saying is what if we get another big, very large obligation? How would we pay for it, right?
And the reality too is, it's, it's, you know, the state does a lot of things. So, the more money you spend, the more money you get. I mean, that's how, that's how the calculation-
That's why circuit breakers are higher for next year.
And you're, you're right, Mr. Brown, because the money with this was withdrawn. Leftover money from the state, from the FinCon reserve gets put back into the general fund and then they replenish it up to 1.5 again. But that's also the FinCon reserve for the town.
Correct.
And yes, our schools matter so much, but we also have to make sure that we, we, we plan as much as possible to take care of the things we need to take care of and, so, I just want to make sure we keep that in mind too, because that money is-
Could I pursue that, that very point? You reached an agreement with the, the town manager that for technical reasons, it made more sense for our reserve funds to be handled that way instead of in our own account? Is that a fair way of describing what happened?
I think the history is that, I say, a blur of which meeting I sent this in, but a lot of towns don't include the circuit breaker funding as a budget for the next year. It's a reserve for them. So, if they have unanticipated expenses, they're able to tap into their circuit breaker funds. We've never had that ability. We've always had to anticipate what the amount is gonna be and then that's part of our budget for the next year. So, it happens that there are unanticipated expenses, move-ins, court decisions, whatever it might be.
Not just special, I don't mean just special, I mean any kind of unanticipated expense.
Correct, correct. But we did set up specifically the special education stabilization fund a few years ago for that purpose. And the town manager definitely has a preference that we not use that type of fund, but that the finance committee have the approval of any reserve that might be needed. So, that's the mechanism now.
Okay, but does that mean there's a sort of understanding that up to some point, it's not inappropriate for us to ask for certain amount of unexpected expense of any kind to come out of that?
Right, and basically, it would be the expectation that if those occur, they're brought forward immediately and then the justification of why they are unanticipated or unexpected is explained.
I mean, in, in the abstract, it sounds like it would be, to me, it'd be nicer to, we have our own emergency fund, so we don't plan on, but she's extremely capable town manager. She probably has a good reason for what she suggested.
It's a lar, it's a large sum of money and, over the years, I have asked if it's, if it would be possible, not just her, but previous town managers as well. It's just a, it's a big addition to the budget in order to free up those funds and we've never had the ability to, to do that.
Just a question on the, since we're, we're delving into some more of the details on the tuition out of district. I'm just looking around the assumptions that are made in terms of the number of students. Are you assuming the same, so you know how many, we know how many students for this year. Are you assuming the same number in '25?
So, Marcy and, and her team know every single student, not surprisingly, and they know who's coming and, and who's going, for the most part. I mean, there are students that we'll put in there who, they're not sure yet of, of the, if there's gonna be a placement or not. But yes, they keep track of every single individual and know.
Yeah, so, I, I would anticipate, even if the number is one or two, cost-wise relatively the same, because my placement costs vary to significant degrees. So, I wouldn't, I would not anticipate an increase, increased cost to out of district tuitions, that's anything significant going into next year, given what we know is already going out and coming in.
Yeah, the best we know, right? But it, but it's using the same, so roughly, within onesy-twosy students, right? It's, you're assuming, building this from the same number of students from, from this year and next year. And just, sorry, sorry, just one more, and so just tying that back to the conversation, I think, and I might get the number wrong, but there was, I think, was the increase in IEPs a little this year? Was it 65? Is it, is that, and I don't know if there's any correlation here, so I'm asking the question. Kind of with those increased IEPs and, you know, do you expect that will continue next year with the additional screening? And will that lead to more out of district placements that we need to consider or?
I don't think, so that's, that 69 number was new enrollments, that up to, to new special education enrollments up to date this year. That's not unusual. And again, the, half, half of those are at the preschool, so those are, we know those are special education students. What is different, if you look over the last two years, is that when students come in, we categor, students are categorized based on needs. Low, there's two categories of low, moderate or high need students. And a large percentage, two thirds of those students were categorized as moderate and high need students. That's a significant difference in terms of needs. Do I anticipate looking at those groups of students, do, can we meet their programmatic needs? Yes, I don't see any of those students that are, you know, again, we keep a pretty accurate, we meet weekly, we have pretty often, so no.
Okay, all right, I was just, was, came back off of what we heard about the higher number and was kind of thinking if you were, if we, if you needed to-
Yeah, yeah, and again, the, the, it was less about the, it's less about the number and more about when you look into that number a little bit, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So, what does that do to the, the bottom line? It, if we went forward with everything we have right now, we would need $64,437,619. We only have $62,064,629 after removing the facilities expenses. So, that leaves a deficit of 2.37 million, which, as I said, it's different than I showed the other night because I moved the TAs down right here. So-
Yeah, so, now, we're going to share with you the cuts that we have proposed to address the shortfall. I want to stress that this was not easy work, but it was collaborative efforts. Many leaders from both the schools and the town came together to put this list together. Melissa Rodriguez, our town manager, and her team, Lynn Savage and Kyle Warren have supported us in this work. And you'll see ways that they are helping us to close this gap. Our building leaders, our district leaders, our central office staff, they have done incredibly hard work to identify other areas that we can reduce and ways that we could generate more revenue to offset some of the deficits and the potential cuts that we will have to make in order to close this gap. I'm gonna ask Dr. Millie to walk us through those reductions right now.
So, more than 10 years ago, we hired a firm to help us increase the money we were receiving from Medicaid and basically, it entailed making sure we get all families to sign so that those expenses become eligible. It was extremely successful. In some years, we, we used to get maybe $30,000 and some years after we started that, we had years where it was above $500,000. At one point though, and that was money that we had available to us in the school department, but then in other district, many districts around the state did it, but then it was decided that accounting wise, it was improper for it just to go directly to the school department and it was revenue that came to the town. And it requires a town meeting article vote for you to then provide them to the school department. So, the intent will be moving forward to- So the intent will be moving forward to determine a comfort level of how much Medicaid funding might be coming in in any given year, and then have the town meeting vote that article so the fund become available. I think that's, I know that's what it's been, and it's something like that going forward, but Lynn Savage and the town manager could explain what the mechanism will be.
So how much, so that two hundred and twenty thousand, is that what we are, so the money goes to the town right now, is that currently our portion of, do we then get a portion of it, and we, that would be the thing we would want to? I guess I'm just confused about, do we actually have that money?
The money comes to the town as revenue.
Got it.
Right, and then they have to reallocate it.
So that represents a town reallocating that money to us?
Correct, correct.
So this is sort of a personal issue to me. When we passed education reform, the way that I wrote that part of the formula was that any revenue raised by the school committee should be kept by the school committee, sort of an elementary point, that there's more of an incentive to get it if you actually keep it. And I lost that one. The municipal association said that it really had to go to the town, even though the only way to get it is, you just described, is if the school committee, the school department did the work. I thought that made no sense. It doesn't make any more sense now than then. I'm glad the town, it, it just makes so much sense for the town to say, you do the work, so we know the most, we're going to get the most money if you have the incentive to get it. Apparently, they're going to do the right thing, and I'm pleased about that.
Dr. Mealy, does the two twenty there represent the max, the, what we have been getting? Is it, like, is there, if we did more work, would we get more, or is that pretty much we're tapped out there?
It's, it's been, we haven't had to access it with all the ESER, all the funding that was coming in, and the number, it's been difficult to get a consistent number through COVID. Now that we're coming out, this is the number that both the town and we are comfortable with for right now.
Do we know what it was last year?
About the same. I think it was two thirty-six in Medicaid funding that came in, in total.
But the schools didn't use it, though, correct?
Correct.
Last year, so we, so this isn't money that the schools have been using for something else, so this is just?
Right, it was about that number, but we had, we must have had a Warren article, because we had a hundred thousand dollars made available to us this year.
Okay, so for this year, we had a hundred thousand.
Correct.
So Jim, just, so I'm completely clear, so some of these numbers like that one are, are new revenue, for lack of a better word?
Not necessarily new.
Well, revenue that wasn't anticipated previously.
Correct, correct.
Whereas some of these other numbers are, are truly reductions, cuts.
Correct, so some are infusion of funds, and some are reductions.
Reduction in expenses.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and so, because let's be clear as we go through each one, which, which is which, right? So Medicaid is a infusion of funds, right?
Correct, and the opioid, opioid grant is an infusion of funds. We have some expenses that will certainly be eligible under that grant, that the town manager has committed of, I think it's four, did she say four hundred thousand is the grant?
The grant.
Right, and a hundred thousand would be made available to the school department from that grant.
Thank you.
Yep. The middle school project reserve, when we first started the facilities master plan and the timeline, it was hoped, I guess is the best word, that the middle school project would finish this year instead of next year, and that the additional positions would be added this year. So the money was put aside by the town manager at the reserve to fund those positions. So the money is available in that reserve, even though the project isn't finished yet. So she is willing to make that, the seven hundred thousand available to help offset the deficit, with the understanding that we, so basically, it buys us some time for next year. We have a two-year opportunity to make sure that our staffing levels meet the budget. So the seven hundred thousand, and we'll explain further how that could play a different role, and we have Plan B and we have Plan A.
So seven hundred grand, we have, the plan for a long time was to be able to fund, was it sixteen new positions or?
Originally, we were at fifteen, and then it was determined, so it was a higher number, it was like nine hundred thousand or so, and it was determined that we're not going to need that many positions, so we informed the town manager that it was a lower number needed, seven hundred thousand, so she dropped that number down, and that's what's in the reserve now.
So, and that was because we anticipated using that for the coming school year, but things got delayed, and we're not going to be?
Correct.
The, the middle school will not be fully completed until January, so we don't need to staff those additional classrooms for the full school year.
Correct.
But this is one, I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
But that means if we then don't make some changes to next year's stuff, we would not be able to fund those, continue to not be able to fund those positions?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, it's, that's me just processing, make sure I understand what you said, sorry.
We can hope that more cuts will come by attrition and fewer by layoffs, and they have to come.
Absolutely, the thought process, because we've already gotten two people who have notified us. The consensus is that with the large increase in the teacher salary schedule this coming year, the first year wasn't the big increase, it's the second year, that people are going to be, you know, working this year and then retiring at the end of next year.
Right, right.
And so we anticipate a good number of retirements next year, correct.
Thank you.
Maybe you should say a large number.
What did I say?
You said good. If they're really good teachers, we don't want to really celebrate their departure.
No, we wouldn't.
So the MS Project Reserve, so these were funds that were set aside for teacher salaries in middle school?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
They weren't needed quite yet.
Correct.
We get about a half, do we, is it accurate to say we get about a half a year help from that? Because, because as Joe points out, some of them will be neat, won't?
Not, no, we wouldn't.
We wouldn't make the change mid-year?
Staff until the following year.
The fall of twenty-five.
But that, that money's gone, and that means we need to figure out how we're going to fund those positions, and that's.
So this money would have been for those middle school teachers, which now, so we're, we're solving that twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-five's problem, but we've created a six problem.
Right, anticipating that we'll have more flexibility, especially without impacting staff, because they'll be leaving on their own instead of having to leave.
Okay, so we'll have the middle school, but no teachers? We won't have teachers in that group?
No, we, we certainly intend to still have the additional middle school teachers. It'll have, it'll be a, a district-wide discussion with the, which positions we would have to eliminate.
Okay, and that would happen in twenty twenty-six, so we'd have to reduce, reduce staffing in the other schools in order to staff the middle school, is a potent, that's a potential.
Possible, yes, correct.
Solution that's out there, so that's more teaching, teacher, potential teacher cuts in twenty twenty-six that we have to think about.
Right, this would be a big topic item during next year's budget discussion, which will happen in January.
So we're, we're just pushing the, we're delaying some of the cuts in hopes that next year, with some additional attrition and our retirements, we would, we could make less cuts.
Correct.
But if that doesn't happen, we'd still be making the same amount of cuts or more.
Well, we'll make the same number of cuts, it's just that it's, just as you said the last time we met, all else equal, it's better if we don't have to lay people off if we don't need to.
Yeah. Homeless reimbursement comes into the town, and there's a different mechanism that they can make that available to us, so they're, they're doing that. We do have a couple of students that come into our district from other districts, and they pay us instead of sending them to a, an out-of-district placement, and that's a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Mike from IR, IT director, has indicated that he can reduce his budget by another forty thousand dollars. He's also had some discussions with us about our one-to-one device and how we might want to, as, as we've seen it in action for a few years now, there might be some tweaks that could also result in some savings, and make it more effective.
So in terms of, so the forty thousand dollars that he'd cut, are those student face, is that student facing technology or just?
It would, it could be a software, it could be some, some item that we're not, we're, he looked at usage, the usage isn't high, so it's something that we can cut. So we looked up at the budget, from what is existing in his budget for FY twenty-five, he feels comfortable taking another forty thousand dollars out of that.
So up to the line that says incoming OOD, that's all infusions of funds, correct?
Correct.
IT Mike is first place where we're seeing reduction in expenses.
Reduction, correct. Yep, and, yes, and then the next one is as well, stipends, those are some stipends that we feel like, they're in the contract, but we might not need them, so we might, we're looking at the possibility of me, operating the subs through front, was it frontline?
Frontline, so we right now use a system where we give people stipends to help to run our substitute system, so we have frontline that we're currently using for the teacher evaluation system, as well as the teacher professional growth. We have a meeting to talk to them about, perhaps they manage teacher absenteeism, that might be a cost saving, is something to look at. We also could do it through Power School.
So I'm a little confused, this, this is a way to, how, how, how are we reducing the expenses? I'm unclear.
We currently pay people to manage the assist, the substitutes in our building, and if we don't pay those stipends, it's money that we can potentially look at again, and I don't know what the cost would be if we add these additional features. We already have Power School, we already have frontline, it may not be a large cost.
And it's a typical system that a lot of schools utilize.
Using more of an automated system?
An automated system.
Than a manual system, is the idea, to, to assign substitutes and cover classes?
Correct.
Okay, so it's an operational savings.
Correct.
Is that all of it, or is there other stipends that would be?
The other stipends are, we do have some stipended work that we, that our staff does in terms of helping to support curriculum implementation in the building, and we would look at reducing that stipend work. So it's not taking all of that work out of the school buildings, but it's taking some of the work out of the school.
And that's the work that, that curriculum leaders, the teacher leaders have been doing to help implement wit and wisdom and preview materials and get them ready for other people to use.
Implementation of our math curriculum, implementation of responsive classroom, which is our response to social emotional learning within the school. So we would look at those curriculum leader positions and reduce some of them, and then reconsolidate, so that the people that are still doing it, looking at what the high needs might be.
But is that a good idea? I mean, that, that sounds like, in general, a pretty smart thing to do, to say, there are ways that teachers can help us, we understand it's extra work on their part, so it seems to me like a pretty sensible thing to do.
It is sensible, and that's why we're not reducing all of them.
But I guess I'm asking you if you're comfortable that this sixty-five thousand is not too large a reduction.
Uncomfortable, yeah. I think that, you know, we haven't had an opportunity to talk to our teachers yet, so I don't, I don't want to, I would never want a teacher to learn, or a person to learn that their stipend was being removed on a public forum like this, but I do believe we have other safeguards in the system, so I'm comfortable with the proposed positions that we are eliminating.
It's an application process yearly.
Correct.
Are there any student groups that will be affected by the stipend cuts?
No.
Just on the stipends, just one?
Oh, just one.
The green team, which I mentioned the other night.
Is that, which school is that out of? Is that a, I'm just not familiar with it.
Right, it's, a teacher is given a stipend to manage the students, to form a student group, to help with recycling and composting and those kind of things.
Does that mean those efforts will be, will disappear, or can they be?
No, we have an excellent coordinator, who has, has often a one-woman show, and, and did so, we didn't really see a cha, a big change from when it was just her trying to manage it, and it's a lot of work for her, and having the green teams. So that's why we're considering, and we'll revisit it, but for next year.
It might be something that we'd ask PTOs to work with, building leaders about, perhaps a parent wants to step into it, if there was an educational organization in the community that wanted to supplement and support that, that might be a place for them as well.
Great, thank you.
Teaching assistance, as we said, is reflected here, and I'll have Pam, ask Pam or Marcy to address that one.
So that's sixteen teaching assistants. As you know, these are sixteen positions that were unaccounted for this year. We have been looking at our goal, so Marcy and I have been meeting with the principals, and we'll continue to meet with the principals. Our goal is to establish our classes for next year, and then sort of reorganize and look at how we support our students, and so we are proposing to eliminate sixteen teaching assistant positions across all levels, so that would be, you know, all schools.
So the, these are not one-to-one assistants that are required by IEPs?
No, no, we would not move the one-to-one assistance, but looking at how we reallocate some of the assistance, and looking at some of the work that our special education teachers are doing as well. I know we have looked at co-teaching and pushing in models.
There'll be no jeopardy to, there'll be no jeopardy to, ratios have to be abided by, so there's going to be no jeopardy to, to what the ratios that we have to continue to provide for students.
What are these people doing now? They, like, when, if you have a policy which is pretty common, that most kindergartens have a teaching assistant?
That's one, so a lot of the, so a lot of the new hires, so a lot of the determination around class placement, and happens, you know, as students come in, so it's really, in terms of our work around policies for placing our students around when they come in, we have to look at that a little bit and be more strategic about how we're placing students in classes when they come in. What we don't want to do is that if a student qualifies for more or less services, we would never displace a student, that's not, you know, it's not even a question, but it's really working at, A, when you talk about a cushion at the start of the school year, giving ourselves a little bit of cushion with the providers that we have. I think what we do is that we provide the lowest ratios, you know, possible amongst various classrooms, in the, you know, in, in what we think is the best interest, but then as students move in and needs change, then, you know, we're left with having to have to spread people too thin, so I think we can do, we can do a better job at initially placing students to meet those needs.
How many teaching assistants are there altogether?
I think we're at one seventy?
Six.
Seventy-six. One hundred seventy-six.
Okay, so that puts this in perspective, doesn't it?
And these sixteen, did, will impact one particular school more than one, or they're, they're evenly spread between all the elementary and the middle and the high, or?
So high school has been operating at a deficit throughout this year, so it likely won't impact the high school.
They haven't had enough?
Yes.
Okay.
But the reallocation would be, we would say, pre-K through eight mostly.
And, I know that would be, I don't want to ask that question, never mind, that would be too revelatory about people, so, never mind.
And the next that we're looking at is our teaching positions. Teaching positions, again, would be all levels, so this is pre-K to twelve. We've identified with the help of our building leaders, five point five positions that we can eliminate for FY twenty-five.
Are those people who, is that through, through your anticipated attrition and retirement, or people who, or others?
Others, so, retirement or attrition, we are looking at our class sizes, staying within the parameters of the school committee. We believe that, well, we have some classes that are, that are on the lower side, so that we can perhaps, you know, we'll make some reductions there, so that all of our class sizes are a little bit more consistent across the board. Obviously, it varies from school to school, so if you know, in a big school, you have a little bit more wiggle room in terms of what a class size will look at, if you have a smaller school, where you only have two classes, sometimes you don't have that ability. And then we'll also look at some programmatic changes, so if there are ways that we can service all the students by making a slight programmatic change, which would allow us to eliminate a position.
And are any of those positions would impact teachers with professional status? Or is that, if that's an appropriate question to ask this ti, at this time, I understand?
Yeah, probably not. Probably not. If it did impact a teacher with professional status, it wouldn't mean that there's not another position that they could move into.
Move into because of the reduction. Because of the reduction in force rules and certification.
Is there a bumping system in the contract?
Mm-hmm, correct.
So you eliminate a position currently held by a more senior teacher, she can bump wherever she wants, or there's some boundaries?
There are some boundaries, it would depend on.
Right, it's not necessarily a bumping, as in getting to choose, it would be an other available position that they are qualified for. Or if, the bumping would come in if there was a, somebody with less years who was in a similar position.
Right.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm sorry, just, did you say that the five point five would come from attrition, or would not?
It, some of it is coming from attrition.
Some of that, okay.
So there might be a retirement position that we do not fill, but we are looking at programmatic changes that would allow us to deliver the same services to students, but perhaps with less staff. With less staff.
I'm sorry, Marcy, I should have asked this before. With the teaching assistants, what is the rate, what's the ideal ratios that we go for? Like, what's our starting point that we really would want?
Yeah, so the only, the only specific ratios that we have to, and again, there's always flexibility, because what you start, the, the Department of Education understands that you don't start the school year with the same that you end the school year with. We always try to keep our ratios, you know, in that fifty percent range, outside of some, some COAT classes at the high school. We're not nearly high in those ratios. The elementary school classrooms are particularly low in ratios. I don't, you may not feel that way, but the reality of it is that the ratio is pretty low here.
And we're talking about the ratio of students who might need some services versus students who don't?
Yep.
So, no more than fifty is usually the guideline that we go by, but are we more in the twenty to twenty-five percent range?
It really depends class by class, year to year.
And needs and schools and all that stuff.
Yep, and supports.
And ideally, what would be the, in those classrooms that need more support, is there a particular ratio that we move towards or we would want in terms of teaching assistants, or teaching, a teaching assistant or a teacher in the room with the kiddos?
Yes, I think that's the part of the work that we do with the principals, because again, if we're, if we're starting the process of having discussions about what was discussed through our review, we're looking at making some shifts around, which we have, we've made those shifts over the years, but continuing to make those shifts to have our special education teachers servicing more minutes within the classroom. Again, we are, we, we don't have any leeway of changing any services that are currently in place, but that's, again, some of the work that I think we'll be talking about in the future, and some of the conversations and meetings that will be have, I mean, we meeting committees and whatnot through the review, and then that's part of the discussion that we'll have with principals too. So scheduling, we've gotten better scheduling earlier and earlier every year, but this year is going to be early, early.
And, and I know you believe this, but just to reiterate and to assuage any fears that parents would have at home that are listening, our intention is not to reduce the important services that kids are going to provide because of their IEP or the five or fours or anything like that, but we're going to maintain the services that the kids need, because that's what they need, and we're going to do that happily.
No reductions.
Thank you, that's why, and I know that's the thing, but I want to say that, make sure everyone, everyone else hears that.
Just for clarity, the ratios you're referring to, what do those mean?
The Department of Education mandates that we maintain ratios of students, special education versus general education in a classroom. So in this district, again, we've had some higher ratios in COAT classes at the high school, but overall, we maintain relatively low general education to special education student ratios in class.
Which is the numerator, which is the denominator, sorry.
It's, we, we stay fifty-fifty, so it's, you know, if you have sixteen kids in a class, you know, you're going to.
You want to keep it under eight that are special education?
Yep.
Eight out of the sixteens are, less than or equal to?
I mean, the ratios are, again, we, they don't, the mandates are, you know, if a student moves in, we're not going to say that class is closed to you, you're going to still go into that classroom.
Of course, yeah.
And the, again, the Department of Education understands that those things sometimes change. We're not in the position that we've had to do any waivers or anything along those lines. If that does happen, it's typically at preschools, because the influx of students that come in at preschool, I mean, talk about a, an unknown, that's particularly the most unknown situation, but we have never, since I've been here, had to do that, so again, we've always maintained.
I just want to be clear, so low means, it's the ratio of, of special education students to general ed in a classroom. Low means fewer special ed to general ed, high means more.
Equal, it was not low, it's not more, it's not necessarily, we, it's equal.
Okay, no, no, I understand that, I'm just when you use the term, we're low here.
Oh, lower ratios, yes.
I want to understand what that meant.
Less than, sorry, yes.
Thank you, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
One more question, so one here, we've got the teaching positions, there's the five point five. So how many more teaching positions are you expected in FY twenty-five that will just go because, well, you have retirements and you'll have attritions? How many overall positions do you expect to reduce, or does this include any of those retirements? Does that question make sense?
So for this, for this coming year, or the?
For FY twenty-five, so I know here, here you're clearly saying there's going to be five point five teaching positions. But I just want to make, so does that, I just want to make, are there additional positions that will, won't be filled because those teachers will retire? Or just, I just want to make sure, are those all included in here?
It's all included.
Like, if we have fifteen teachers retired?
We're not anticipating any more than this.
It's not going to be fifteen, it's only, we're only going to end up with five point five less for next year, even if we had a flux of retirement.
I think we're, at the elementary level, we would evaluate based on class size.
Correct.
But, yeah, based on class, if everything else stayed the same, that we would fill those positions, but obviously then, if you don't need them.
Mm-hmm, right, and theoretically, if somebody, normally if somebody leaves, it's, not always, but it's somebody at the higher step on the salary schedule, and then somebody's coming in at the lower step. Admin assistant, we've generalized that, you know, for the district, but we're trying to be sensitive to the individuals that it could impact.
Would that be one whole, or two halves?
That's one, that's one FTE, one whole.
Is that one whole person, or two half people?
One whole.
One whole person, thank you.
Correct. And then preschool tuition, in talking to Dr. Garter, we're pretty low on it, and it hasn't gone up in quite a while. We anticipated having discussions about our fees, whether it's rental fees, athletic fees, transportation in preschool for the next budget year. It would, it could warrant a, an increase of two hundred dollars per month. Right now, people pay three twenty, but it's still pretty low, that would still be lower than in-town daycare, and make us competitive, more competitive with surrounding districts for that service. So that would level the budget.
So that's the last row?
Additional revenue.
Additional revenue.
That's new revenue.
So that would make, was it the half-day preschool tuition to be, what, five something a month?
Twenty, I think it is, five twenty?
Five twenty, it would be five twenty a month for the half-day preschool.
But those parents would be paying in addition, it's a ten-month program, so it's an extra two thousand dollars.
Per year?
Per year.
It's ten-month, correct, it's a nine and a half, correct.
It's a ten-month, so, so that's a significant increase, and that's just, and we only charge, the students that attend there because of early intervention, they, they attend, they don't pay that.
Correct.
Because the program is designed to them, but the others do pay that, and the goal there is to make sure they have like peers, so that the ratios are good.
Correct.
Do I remember correctly that there's a certain amount that comes in chapter seventy for support of preschool students who are not on ed plans? I'm pretty sure, as I put it there.
Yeah, I'm not as familiar with the chapter seventy formula as you are. I know that when we did the, switched from half-day kindergarten to free full-day kindergarten, big reason for doing that was that we were going to receive the full amount for those students, and it actually did increase our chapter seventy funding by over four hundred thousand dollars a year going forward. But the preschool one, I, I wasn't familiar.
The formula, unless someone's changed it, was that you get reimbursed for a hundred percent of your preschool children on IEPs, and you, and in your foundation budget is an equal amount for, an amount for an equal number of students not on IEPs, for the obvious reason that it's good to have a mix. Now, it doesn't mean it all comes to the town and the bottom line, because you only get a certain percentage. I have, I've never ever thought about whether you, we could be receiving state funds for this and also building parents. But if it's not, if, if no one's raised it with you, then like.
It's never been raised, now, and, yes, similarly, when we had the half-day kindergarten, we were receiving tuition for half and chapter seventy for half.
Right, but then, once you got chapter seventy, you didn't keep charging tuition?
Correct.
That's, I guess, what I missed here, is, is, if it's not, if Desi's not raising the issue, then I'm sorry I brought it up.
It's okay. So that, we're calling it Plan B, because the preferred plan is Plan A.
Oh, there's a different list?
Nope, nope, nope.
Not a different list.
The list is exactly the same, so I don't have to go through all of that, but there's a.
Yep, so we have a commitment from the town, as Dr. Mealy has said earlier, we have a commitment from the town manager to use the seven hundred thousand dollars in reserve from the one from the middle school positions that we've already talked about. But through a combined effort with her team, we have developed a plan to offer a voluntary separation incentive program that we will believe will allow us to gain revenue to mitigate the loss of student-facing positions. I see you have some puzzled looks on your faces, so I'm going to just say that again, just so you can absorb it for a minute.
I'm a little puzzled because I'm having trouble.
Early retirement?
Yes.
We have a plan that Dr. Mealy's going to walk you through, that is a volunteer, voluntary separation incentive plan that will allow us to gain revenue, to hopefully to mitigate some of these losses and perhaps not have to do Plan B.
So, pause.
Yep.
How, how does that gain revenue?
Oh, okay, glad you asked that question.
Tell me you're puzzled by the idea that we're going to pay someone to go away and it will save money?
Give us money?
I've always shared your view about that.
Dr. Mealy's going to walk you through the specifics of that, and then if you have any questions, we're here today, we'll help you answer them.
So, right, it's a, there's a different factors that play into this, and this is a result of the meetings that we've been having with Melissa Rodriguez and Lynn Savage, ourselves, of, of ways that we might be able to mitigate the impact on employees. And so what we would do is have a incentive, depending on your category, and we haven't captured all of them. There could be some out there that don't fall into these, but we'd have to decide which ones they fall into. But right now, admin assistant and a custodian would get twenty thousand dollars if they announce that they are resigning or retiring by August thirtieth, and they would have to make that decision between May fifteenth and July one, that they are leaving. Anywhere from that, from that point until August thirtieth, but at least by August thirtieth. For a teacher or administrator, it would be thirty thousand dollars, and for a teaching assistant, it would be fifteen thousand. Now, these numbers don't mean anything other than, this is a possible scenario, where if this number of people in that category took that option, then that would result in a cost of two hundred and forty thousand for sixteen TAs, fourteen teachers. Now, we're not looking to get, you know, reduced by that number of teachers, but it could accommodate that for four hundred and twenty thousand, and then forty thousand if two admin assistants or custodians pick, and it could be any combination of those, but we have seven hundred thousand dollars to work with. And if that was the way it played out, these are the average salaries of those individuals. So fifty thousand for admin assistants and custodians, ninety thousand is the current average salary for our teachers, and thirty-one thousand for our teaching assistants. So you could see if these individuals left and the numbers were the same as previously shown, you'd have salary savings of a hundred thousand, one point two million, and four hundred and ninety-six. Now, if the people who are slated to go choose this option, then they've, we've mitigated the impact, and one of the conditions of this program is that you agree that you are not eligible for unemployment. So we get to avoid this cost to the town of unemployment, so that factors in. And so if we take out the seven hundred thousand dollars that we're putting in, that would leave one point one five six, but as we said, those positions, we're not, not going to replace all of those positions, so there would be a delta between the person leaving and the person coming on board, if somebody chose it, and we needed to backfill that position.
So, so just in the teacher line, ideally, would be people, people who would do this might be close to retirement, and this could be a payment that they take instead of staying for next year, they could go, they might volunteer to go now. What impact would that have on, does that impact their pension and their things at all?
So I did, I did do that calculation, and it's interesting, because.
Would this be pensionable or included?
No, no.
I don't even know, I don't know.
It's in the language that it would not be. And it, I was curious myself, right, it's the first thing I thought of, was, is this attractive to somebody? And so if you look at a teacher who might be in the nineties, and you're going to count their highest three in, in our likelihood, the most recent three years, and the delta between if they decided to do it now instead of waiting until next year, which is the big jump for teachers, was only about eleven hundred dollars in, in the average between the three years, the, you know.
Someone said, it said averaging ninety years.
So eleven hundred dollars, and then you would take eighty percent of that as a max, right? So you're at eight hundred and something, nine, almost nine hundred dollars per year versus thirty thousand dollars now.
That, does that, this would be taxed?
Right, and it's taxed, correct, so they'd have to, that would be part of their calculation.
So it's like, more like seventeen thousand?
No.
Depends, but like, yeah, but that's a, that's a difference for them, that's like getting, it's getting that difference for like ten or fifteen years all at once, or twenty years all at once.
Exactly, so that's a decision that, it's people in that.
It could fund that very nice retirement trip to Alaska.
Exactly, so it could be attractive to those people who, maybe we're going to wait one more year. Yep.
So they get them, so the net present value, they're getting their money sooner, right?
Correct.
That's the whole idea, they're going to get a little less, but they're going to get it much sooner.
And the difference is about forty thousand dollars between somebody at the top step and somebody coming in at the new, at the first step or even the second or third.
Does it save us on our pension payments, or that what we would then have to fund into retirement accounts?
For OPEB?
Yeah.
That's mostly based, as far as I understand, on FTEs, so if you reduce FTEs, then you're decreasing the OPEB liability.
Is there any concerns or extra costs with like bridging people to medical and things like that? Is that, I'm not sure how that works under the contract, but.
It does explain to those individuals in the letter what their options are. Some people would be eligible for the continuing healthcare coverage through retirement, and others, whatever the options are to an individual is made, they're made aware of.
Okay, but there would be no additional costs to the schools?
No.
But they, but it would be explained to them, so they could make, be part of their decision?
Yes.
I thought Joe's question was, does the pension get paid out of some state account, or do we get billed directly for the teachers, our teachers who are getting pensions?
We don't, no, not for the MTRS, we don't get charged.
So we retire more people, somebody somewhere pays more money, but we don't?
Correct, well, it's the pension fund for the MTRS, right?
Okay.
Yep.
Well, which they've contributed to partly, right, in their time, or no, that's just state.
Yeah, they do contribute, but the point is, once they retire, they have nothing to do with our budget.
Right, it's not a hit on our budget.
Correct, correct.
So we, assuming we don't replace any of these positions, we lose eighteen hundred and fifty-six, one point nine million dollars of service, and we save one point two million in money, which I think is what Dave was puzzled about.
We would have to replace some of those positions.
That isn't really a good idea.
Wait, wait, so, hold on, first of all.
We would have to replace some of those positions. We would have to replace some of those positions, so depending on, we would have to replace some of those positions.
I understand, but Dave asked a question that's always puzzled me. We're paying these people money to go away, and I think the answer to his question is, at least at first, no, we lose 1.9 million dollars of service and we save 1.2 million dollars. Now, I understand it's more complex because we replace them at lower cost, but I think he's on to something, right?
Well, no, no, the term revenue was used before, that's what was really throwing me. The term revenue was used, there's no revenue here. These are savings. It's different, right?
True.
You're not, you're not getting.
With $700,000 that we could otherwise have spent, we're spending $700,000.
Worst case scenario, because everybody may not go for this.
Well, assuming that people did, then 32 people would go away, and, and we would have lost, what I said, 1.9 million dollars of service and saved ourselves 1.2 million dollars.
In costs.
In costs. Now, I understand that it's a one-time payment of 700,000 in the savings, if that's the word, but, so if we, I guess the theory is if we replace them at, say, 60%, is that the idea?
Correct.
Then, we're going to, the 1.9, I really shouldn't do arithmetic in public, but we're going to, it's going to only cost us 1.2 million a year, at least at first, instead of 1.8 because we have more junior people?
So, right, that impacts.
And that's where the savings come from?
Correct. So, you've got, you've got the ability to mitigate the impact on individuals, you've got the ability to save on the unemployment costs, and then you're going to see savings from the turnover savings that occurs when you have somebody at the top step go and bring them in at a bottom step. Yes.
Although there is a poss, it is, it's possible that people more experienced are actually worth more to us.
Correct.
That was going to be my question. So, we're just, is thinking about the turnover and the, you know, the experience lost with something like this, what's our normal numbers in terms of losing experienced teachers and educators? So, would we typically lose 14 across the system in a year and then bring in newer? Is there going to be increased, I mean, professional development costs?
It really depends on the year, it depends on the age of our educators. I mean, I've worked in this, in systems where some years a district has five people turnover, like retire, and, you know, in the district I worked in last year, there were probably like 22 people who chose to retire. I mean, it just happens, it sort of, as people get to that certain age.
We do have some data on this, right? Because during the salary negotiations, right, we analyzed, you know, our staff, right? Somewhere in there was a scattergram of our staff, and we do have a heavily experienced staff, right, if you looked at our profile. We do, yes, and that.
That got really loud.
We have a staff that for a while now has been experienced and not ready for, not at retirement age, but they're approaching the 30 years and still maybe not that age, but maybe.
They're getting close.
Do something else.
Yeah.
Now that they, you know, once they max out. And that's going over the next few years, we'll start seeing that.
In terms of who is eligible, would people who already filed for retirement, and we're making that Plan B able to?
We're still working out the details with the town manager, but at, at present, that they would not be eligible if they've already announced their retirement or resignation.
So, if I remember right.
That's typical, though, but that's typical.
There are about 370 teachers altogether?
Those who fall into the category of, and the teachers unions, 420.
So, that 16 or 14 should be put in perspective. Out of 400, it's not a huge number.
Correct. Correct.
So, there's no concerns on terms of just kind of with bringing in, I'm making the assumption, less experienced staff and teachers? There's no concern that there would be additional costs for professional development or integration into the teams? It's just normal course of business?
That's what we would plan for, normal course of business, just like, as if somebody retired. We always have a mentor, we have a mentoring program, we have, you know, directors, we have department chairs who get their teams, you know, ready to go. And again, just a reminder, where the numbers where it says participants, that's just an example for you tonight. We're not looking for 14 teachers and 16 DAs, and, you know, it doesn't have to be that configuration of numbers.
So, let's say only some people do it. What is that then do to Plan B?
So, then the 700, let's say we only use 200 of that, we get the other 500 as we would in Plan B.
So.
Was that due to the?
Are we allowed to do first come, first served? Or if we announce this, do we have to give it to everybody who accepts?
No, we would, there's a cutoff, and it's explained that only those funds, and our intent right now would be first come, first served.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
That's fine. So, Pam, what, are you suggesting that you prefer this, that the loss of senior people in your view is small enough that the advantages that Jim just said outweigh them? Is it, you're, I'm curious, in your recommendation to us?
That is my recommendation, based on the conversations that we've had, Jim and I, with the town manager and her team, that we believe this is a plan that looks viable, that looks like something that we would like to offer, because as we offset, so, you know, some of this, we will be able to go back and look at Plan B and then potentially not have to do some of the things that we had just said to you that we would have to do.
Okay.
So, can you go back to Plan B for me?
It's the same, it just doesn't have this at the bottom.
Okay.
Can I just ask quickly, before you go back, I take it the $236 number at the very bottom means that basically this solves the problem for FY '25? Is that what that means?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, if we, so say we had some people do it, and we, that means we would be able, how would that impact all these other? I just need you to explain how the incentive program, I get how the incentive program works. That makes sense to me.
Right.
But can you explain to me, how does it impact?
So, then we're going to go.
The other numbers on here?
Right, so if more people, let's say some more people choose to retire, right, then we may not, depending on what that number looks like, we're going to start looking at the student facing positions in Plan B, and that, that might change.
The idea would be to reduce, reduce those, the numbers.
It wouldn't necessarily be 16 TAs, it could be only a few, or it might not be five and a half FTEs, it could only be four and a half, is what you mean?
Correct. We would have to prioritize those.
Assume the more people accept, the fewer layoffs there are.
Correct.
Correct.
And that's where you'd go first versus any of the other cuts?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Okay.
That's it.
Could you just go back to this, I want to scroll down over the numbers.
On this?
Yeah, so the, in terms of layoffs, the layoff, right now, the projected layoff amount is four, eight, so that's almost, it's almost 950. So, this could solve almost two thirds or three quarters of the layoff? If, if this fund was completely maxed, maxed out, it could solve like two thirds of the layoffs?
Correct. Right, and we would anticipate.
You're doing some bad math to my head.
Quite a few of the individuals, once they, we've had those conversations with them, that this makes sense to me to do it this way, and it's not a layoff, it's their decision.
Allowing the people to self-select and get something out of it.
Correct.
If, if, I'm sorry, Jim, if you go back to the Plan B, sorry, Plan A, yeah, yeah. So, the net, the net savings over there, yeah. If, if this were fully, if this were fully taken advantage of, in other words, if, I want to make sure I understand, this, this plan here is the max we would do, right? These are the most we would accept, first come, first served.
Up to $100,000.
We would stop at this point. So, the savings, if that happens, is a 1.156, right?
Right, although, given the, and again, this is just kind of the model. We are, we obviously are looking for 16 teaching assistants, we've already said that.
Yep.
The others, we, we probably wouldn't want to reduce by 14 teachers.
Sure.
So, what we would see there is that would bring down some the, the salary savings because now it's the delta of 100 versus 60, of 40,000.
So, where are the savings, did they appear? If you move that up, so we can see, the net savings from this plan, where are they in this whole list?
So, that's the 700,000 is if we didn't do the program, and that money is going to be used, so it needs to generate at least 700,000, and then anything over 700,000 goes towards mitigating these, these cuts, including the tuition increase.
Can I ask a, I'm going to ask another question.
Yeah.
These are one-time costs, right? Is there anything?
No. No, and people come in at lower grades, there are lower grades for several years.
The payout is a one-time cost. Is there anything, well, I don't imagine if there's anything illegal or using the monies in this way to pay severance packages. There's nothing like odd or against policy from the state or taxes?
No, it.
Like, there's nothing here that would be suspect to other?
No, absolutely not.
It's all on the up and up?
No, absolutely.
Right, so the only, so this backfires, though, if we don't get enough takers.
Not necessarily, if we don't, we still have the money to offset, we still have that.
You don't have to spend the full 700, right?
Exactly, exactly.
You spend, you only spend in proportion to what people take advantage of.
Correct.
So, there shouldn't be a scenario where this is a net loss to us?
Correct.
Speaking financially.
Correct.
It can't be, there's no possibility for this to become a net loss. If fewer people take it than they'd like, then it doesn't save as much, but it still saves something.
Correct.
Just to make sure, okay.
Yeah, because for the identify, for the estimated 16 teaching assistants in the, I guess, Plan B to look to lay off, this is really allowing people to self-select.
Correct. That's a big part of it, yes.
It's a big, you know, it's giving choice and self-select, allowing them to do it, maybe some of the more expensive ones in all of these, right? If they're closer to retirement and it works out well.
That's the theory, right? They'd be more tempted to do it.
Absolutely.
Tempted to do it, and but then really, it's the teachers where we'll be looking for more, hopefully, than the 5.5 that we would have to lay off if we didn't do this. But there'd be more than maybe some of the more expensive ones, and then we can hire and bring in others, bring in different talent.
Correct.
You can't retire if you haven't been here a certain number of years, so it's sort of automatic.
It is a good distinction to, to make that it's retire or resign.
Oh, or resign?
Yes.
So, if I, if I've only been here for 10 years or whatever, or a younger teacher, and I decide I'm going to, I want to make a career change anyway, this could be advantageous to be able to fund some classes or to do what I want next or whatever. Like, it could be, I imagine for people in the middle, this would not be appealing, but those really young or, or older, this could be a viable option.
Correct.
But it doesn't benefit us particularly, does it?
Depending on, so if somebody who hasn't been here a long time, it's kind of a wash.
Because we're paying them.
Well, but we've paid them, we've paid them a certain amount of money, and to replace them, we have to pay the same amount to their replacement.
If it's, you're right, if they're only a year, yes.
So.
Correct.
Can we write this in such a way to prevent that?
We'll have that discussion. You know, there's a lot of variables to consider, but we'll, we'll discuss that with Melissa.
Yeah, I've seen ways of doing it where you take me age or years in service to do that. It's pretty common, where you take some kind of combination, so you don't end up with the one or two years.
Right.
People, because then there, you know, it's not, it's not advantageous to us to do that. So, some combination of age or term, or years of service to get there.
Yep.
So, thank you for all that information and answering all those questions. What happens next? Like, what's the?
So, again, this is informational, and you've already presented, you already passed a budget that we're bringing to town meeting, and so we will, our plan is to go forward with that same.
Number.
Number, and to work with the town manager to institute this incentive plan, and then, you know, as we flush this out, as we said, there will be conversations with certain teachers and certain teaching assistants that we'll have to have because we have to be prepared for both plans or some combination of.
I imagine it's going to be a Plan A.5 or something like, or B.2 or whatever, it's going to be kind of.
Do you need a vote from us?
We do not.
I asked, and we do not.
Okay. A little bit, do we, but maybe we get to decide whether we get to vote on it or not?
You can, right, you could decide if you want to support, a vote to support the plan by all means.
Or not?
Or not.
Or not.
But this is, we appropriate, we're still going to, Tommy is still going to vote to, hopefully, to appropriate the 63, whatever, and we are giving the.
It has nothing to do with what happens in town meeting.
Right, I'm just, but then we.
The same amount.
The same amount, and then, but then it's the administration's duty to spend as such.
Correct.
Inside, inside that.
And this would be a way for you to make sure you stay within those confines.
Correct.
And so, our, if we were to decide we want to vote in support or not in support, we could do that, but we don't, we don't have to, right? That's.
That's correct.
My understanding.
Well, it's a very interesting question, isn't it? I mean, it has to do with to what extent we delegate decisions to the superintendent. I think we all want to delegate a fair amount, probably none of us want to delegate infinite amount. So, we really should think about how much flexibility she, we want her to have and how much we don't.
But for tonight, for the purpose of tonight's meeting, right, this is just a discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm assuming that if we don't do anything, Pam and Jim are going to proceed on Plan A. So, if we want to get involved, we should, I'm just.
So, what we could do procedurally is, so we've had a, for lack of a better word, a first read?
Well.
No, because they're going to either do it or they're not going to do it. Isn't that right? If you're going to do it, we need to do it quickly.
Correct.
Correct.
So, I was going to ask where your timeline is.
If we're going to have a say in this, we do it tonight.
Okay.
So, let me, let me clarify what you're, you're trying to ask. So, you're asking for the committee to decide on a plan of support, but we know from the plans that have been presented, there's still things that need to be critiqued in them, so they're not fully in place, so I'm not.
I agree, but, but the decision between Plan A, you're saying, and I agree with you, that there are substantive questions with either Plan A or Plan B, but they don't need to be made tonight. But the decision about which way to go does have to be made right away. We either delegate that decision to the superintendent, acting superintendent, in which case she'll do it, as she said, or we decide this is something that we should pass on. That's my understanding.
Could I?
I don't know if we need so much as, much as, well, I, I understand what you're saying. I, I, I mean, I think from what's been presented, we certainly want those cuts of personnel that need to be made to have some type of autonomy. I, I think that, as a discussion, I may, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we can be in agreeance of that, that that would be preferable over Plan B.
Plan A.
Plan, which one's?
Plan A is the one that we, the early retirement plan.
Plan A is.
Plan A is early retirement, right?
Yes.
Yeah, Plan A.
Yes.
Their preferred plan, they labeled A.
Prefer Plan A.
Well, in terms of timelines, so like, if, if you move forward with Plan A, you'll iron out more of the details, you'll send out the memo to everyone, there'll be some deadline associated with it.
Correct.
What would be the, what would you anticipate? What would be the, what would you anticipate, like, if you were to get going on that tomorrow, what would be that deadline again?
My understanding is, we would say it's open May 15th, and they have until July 1st to June 30th to let us know.
To make the announcement.
And then they have to, but they have to be done by August.
So they can retire until August 30, or whatever, the number, whatever the date is.
Correct, correct.
So, but to make it sure it happens to, we can start that process on May 15, so people have time to make the choice, and so you have time to start posting and advertising for a potential new teacher, all that stuff, like, we really need to start on that process soon.
Correct.
Correct.
Tomorrow.
In finalizing the...
In finalizing what that, what the details look like, and so that we can get it out to our members.
Right.
Well, okay, provide some information to the committee here that might be relevant. So, one of the questions I was going to ask before we wrapped up tonight, was if people were available to meet again in a few days, because by then, I anticipate by Friday, or at the latest Monday, we'll have proposals in for the work we need to have done. And I was going to ask for a meeting then, to be able to vote on that, right? So my point is, I'm thinking we're not waiting till May 9th to meet again, if, if people are available.
I'm unavailable until Monday.
Okay. I think Monday's, Monday's actually probably preferable, because, because that way, we're sure to have the bids by then.
Well, I, in general, I, my thoughts on the general plan are, can you go back to the plan? Dr. Mullin? I'm going to try and be as succinct as possible, even though I sometimes have too much to say. Can you scroll up, so I can see the categories of things? Thank you, because that's going to help me.
This way?
Yes, so I can stay focused, I appreciate it. Thank you for all the work that you, that the team did, to come up with these numbers, and to present us with something that makes sense. If we do all these things, do we get to the 2.3 million?
Correct, if you see.
You do either way.
Dr. Mill... We are negative 200, you know, we're short $238.
So, if we...
We know, we're to the...
So the big, like, you have a plan to get us to the 2.3 that we need to save, to make sure that next year works well?
Correct.
The question is then, the money from the middle school project, that we were hoping to spend, that we didn't have to spend this year, that's been being held by the town for those positions, could be used to either offset the, some of the money, or could be used strategically to save us some money with an incentive program.
Correct.
Correct.
That aside, all the other things that are, the things are going to move forward.
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate in that, and again, thank you for the team, and the principals, and the assistant principals, who then had to cover the buildings while the principals were doing that, for all the work, I think, I really do appreciate that. And I, it makes me sad to see the 16 number next to the TAs, but less sad to see the 5.5 than what it could have been, with all the other creativity that you did, because that number could have been a lot bigger. I do worry about putting the burden of $200 a month onto our families for preschool, I mean, that's an extra $2,000 a year, and tuition is a lot, and I understand the necessity of that, but my hope was in the next few years to reduce fees, not to increase them, and I know that's, that was a pipe dream, and that's, it feels like it's becoming less and less of a, of a dream, and a far-fetched ideal, so that, I understand why, but I don't like it, right? I also really appreciate that these are trims in various places, and not cuts of big programs. When financial crises have hit in the past, and we've seen in other districts, they just get rid of library, or just get rid of art, or just get rid of ban, or something like that, and I, that would have a, based on pastor history in this district, a 15-year detriment to our, to our students, so I thank you for not thinking in those terms. That really does matter to me, and to what's good for our kids, and thank you also for assuring us that the monies are, the savings is not coming out of cutting services to our most vulnerable students, and that we're going to continue to do what's right for them, no matter what, I really do appreciate that. I, I don't feel the need to officially bless this with a, with a vote right now, I, I think it's, I would be, if we, if we are going to vote on something right now, I would be unable to vote on it, because I haven't had time to properly digest all the things, that's why I like having the two votes. So, that's where I, like, that's where I am, I know it sounds, that's a little strange, but I'll be quiet now.
So, I would like to make a motion that we approve Plan A as opposed to Plan B, and I also, I think, that maybe a little more discussion about the elements that are common to both, I have a little bit, but I think that's separate. Excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. So, yes, I would like to move that we accept the acting superintendent's recommendation that we, that they proceed on Plan A.
It's a point of order, I believe all of you, I may have to ask town council here, but I think that what, I believe we would only be able to voice support, I don't think it's an approval, I don't think that's in our, I'm not sure that's in our responsibilities, may I, may I ask you? Please, I think that all we could do is offer a support vote.
Right, it would, it would be a non-binding, it would just be a vote of support, of the plan that has been presented by the superintendent and her team, and the manager and her team.
But it's, it's, I don't disagree with it exactly, but the notion that these decisions are made between the superintendent and the town manager without the school committee, makes me a little uncomfortable.
Well, I mean, there has been the presentation tonight, obviously, as to exactly, you know, how they are approaching it, but in terms of the jurisdiction, the committee is voting on the bottom line of the, of the budget. And so there's clearly, like, for example, the staffing positions are things that are beyond the jurisdiction of the committee, when you start getting into the nuances.
They become operational?
They're operational.
Yes, but, I mean, I remember when Prop 2.5 got passed, because people in town government, on the town side of town government, were upset that the school committee could pass, literally could put money right into the tax rate. And then the question was, does the town have any control over what happens inside, within the school budget? And the answer was, that's the school committee's, and now what you're suggesting is, actually, the school committee doesn't have any authority either.
Well, I think we, we do have the authority, we still, we voted on the, I mean, before, it was before you, but we've...
No, but the bottom line, the question is, does the school committee have any authority beyond the bottom line? I would have been surprised if the answer to that is no.
So there is precedent in town, and that was a healthcare, health insurance buyout, was that two years ago, or last year? I think it started two years ago.
Probably.
So that's an administrative function that is done, and it's very similar to that, so it doesn't require, as Chris was saying, approval, but there have been actions that have been taken that didn't require approval, but got a vote of support from the school committee.
I, I mean, I'd be comfortable giving a vote of support right now, and I think it's, maybe that's important that we do, I think, since the bottom line is the same as it was going to be, and it's going to continue to be, and you're just doing the necessary things to ensure that you stay within those confines, that it's still largely an administrative function, and not ours, and since time is of the essence, we need to, to move forward with things, and I'll just, like, it's a real simple question. Ms. Lathrop, is this the things that you think are going to serve our students in our district well, to make sure that we stay on budget next year? It's like, you're, like, this is what you think is going to work best?
This is the best way, that I believe...
Somewhere, probably a combination of A and B.
Correct.
I think in an effort to be transparent, and to be supportive of you in this moment, that I'm going to trust Ms. Lathrop and her, this work that her team has done, to come here and say, then, I'm, I'm comfortable supporting her.
So, but before we do that, I mean, you've changed the subject, I, I've asked a different question, which is, does the school committee have any authority, whatever, within the budget total? And the, apparently, the answer is no.
We do, we did.
You do?
No, I mean, my understanding of the answer was...
We approved the 63 million.
I get that, but the question is, if we want the 63 million to be divided in a different way...
We don't.
You don't have, the school committee does not.
We don't have, I'm pretty sure we don't, but given, given bylaws, I'm sorry, given the school committee policies, we're, we're, we don't have the, as far as I understand, we don't have the authority to get into direction of line items, right?
Well, as I said, hold on, as I said the other night, I really don't want us to get into line items, but big program issues...
I understand, I think that's a conversation we could have about next year's budget, and as we go into the budget season, and we do directives in November, and we have the budget presentations in January and February, then we move vote on...
No, but what I just heard was that...
Excuse me, one second, I think at that time, those types of questions, and the authority that we might or might not want to have, would be appropriate, but given the situation that we're in right now, I think it's important that we trust the decisions of Ms. Lathrop, and given the time crunch we're under, that we, that that's not a thing that we should litigate right now. I think that's a future conversation.
I guess what, my understanding is, that at that time, we also have no authority, that we pass a bottom line, and whatever is said, yes, there'll be details up on the screen, but in the end, my understanding is, that we then have no authority that, to see that, that the policy choices implicit in those totals are actually where things go, and that, that would be very upsetting to me.
Well...
And that's what I hear people saying.
Okay, so let me, let me, if I may, I'd like to clarify a couple of things. I think when we set the full budget, we certainly have plenty, we, we hear from the superintendent, who proposes the administration's budget, right, in all its detail, right, and we weigh in on that. And we can, we can say no, at that point, and town council, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at that point, we have the absolute authority to say, no, I don't like, I don't like the way you've done this, go back and do it again, or we won't pass it. Right? So when they bring, say they bring forth a, a budget of X, and at a high level, there's five subparts, and we don't like the way they allocated among the subparts, we can simply say no, go back and do it again, we have that right.
Yes, but, but in the end, we have a bottom line, and what I heard was, that the administration does not need to follow that plan when they actually execute the budget. That's what I heard, now if I'm wrong, that's fine, I'd like to be wrong.
I don't think that's what we're saying.
Well, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't think that's what either one of us is saying, that we're specific to this action, which has been taken, a similar action has been taken, and it's an administrative action that does not require school committee control. It had nothing to do with the school committee's authority over the budget.
But that was, that's my only question, was that in general, when we approve a budget, are there, are there some limits to the ability of management to change the budget after the fact? Obviously, we want there to be some flexibility, I'm not saying that we should be rigid about it, but...
Well, I think...
Right, I think there is what's...
I understood, or misunderstood Christine's comments to be, that once it's passed, we have no authority. If I'm wrong, I'm sorry I've caused this problem, but, did you mean to convey that to me?
Again, in this particular case...
No, I don't mean in this case, I mean in general.
But I don't know how to answer it in general, I mean, we're just...
No, I mean, when we pass an annual budget...
We're passing an annual budget, and...
And it has detail in it, does that detail mean something, or is it only illustrative? That's the issue.
The detail is... Is the question, is this, is your question, once the budget is passed, and as the committee has gone through, say, the process that the chair has described, meaning that a budget was presented, and the committee gave feedback that, you know, we want to, we don't, we don't favor this, we favor that, and is your question, once that happens, does it really not necessarily mean anything? Because then, the administration can then just do whatever they want, and I, to that question, I would say, well, no, as a matter of, at least at a minimum, as a matter of practicality, because now you have an administration that has made representations, and has heard from the committee, and has presented a budget in a certain way, and now they're, they're not adhering to that plan. There's different, it raises different issues, but what I was referring to, in this particular case, is that the bottom line of the budget has been passed, and what the administration is doing now, through Plans A and B, is an attempt, and it's not even just an attempt, it will achieve, because it's going to have to, living within that budget, and, and that is something that they are going to have to handle administratively, and that's why I was saying, that's why I wanted to stick to this particular, this particular case. To your larger point, those are certainly things that, that we can continue to look at, and that, and that I can sort of respond more fully on, on the nature of the concerns, I think, that you're raising. All of which are, you know, are valid and important, and things that should be, should be clearly understood.
I guess I'd make one more comment, I do think a lot of the points you're raising are things we need to consider as we amend our policies going forward. I, I think that we need to take into consideration some of what you're suggesting, and when we, as we, we should look at our policies, and see if they're appropriate, but what I'm saying is that under the current policy, that as I understand it, we're, we are, for this, at this moment, for this particular issue, we, we, we are only able to offer a vote of support or non-support.
I, I'm much more concerned about the general issue than I am about this particular policy.
Yeah, and I think it's my understanding, based on my read of the policies, and I think what town council has just said, is that, that if we would like to have more, I'm certainly in favor of this, more regular reviews, and perhaps more control over the way things change, then we can absolutely, you know, discuss adding, you know, changing our policies to reflect that. I don't know who you are, but, it's not public comment right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, so, do you still want to make a motion, or, no? Okay, thank you, thank you, Chris. All right, so, I think we are done with, with part B of our new business, and now we need to go back to part...
Could I, I have...
Sure.
A couple of policy questions about the cuts. Before, it looks like any cuts are encompassed in what you said, and I'm fine with them. I have kind of one, I was thinking that, two things, I was concerned that, that the reductions not include reductions in professional development, it sounds like they're not going to, is that fair?
Well, professional development is within some of the line items, so depending on what that, that number looks like, we may have to, we will still offer professional development next year, yes.
Well, yeah, of course, my question wasn't whether you would still offer it, was, would it be reduced? Because I would have thought, if we're going to have slightly larger classes, and if we're going to have an emphasis that comes from the special ed report on changing the way regular education classrooms accommodate individual student needs, that if anything, we need more professional development rather than less. And I, I wouldn't want these cuts to work in the direction of less.
They're not going to work in the direction of less. It may look differently at who we use as a service provider, maybe using some of our own staff, but we're not going to be offering less professional development.
Well, it's not up to us to decide which providers you use.
Correct.
And my other thought was, that if there's going to be a certain churn in, you know, positions, people leaving, and, and class sizes changing, this might be an appropriate time to, to think about having school coach, teacher coaches, this doesn't mean layoffs, because the same, it's still, just some... because the same, it's still, just some teacher's job would become helping other teachers improve instruction, which seems to me to be a sensible thing to do when classes are a little bigger, and when, again, we're trying to implement the, the recommendations of the, of the special ed study.
I think you're asking for something that's a difficult, that, that's an operational question.
I'm sorry?
I think that's an operational question, and that you're looking at, I guess I don't understand what you're, are you asking us to implement more coaches within the?
I, I don't think you can have a really excellent school, maybe it's different at the high school, but at, at the elementary or the middle school, if there is no teacher in the school who is job to help all the other teachers improve instruction.
We have a robust mentor program in our.
I'm sorry?
We have a robust mentor program in our district, so we have mentor teachers who work in that coaching capacity, we have coaches within our.
But not one in each school, as I understand.
We do not have one in each school, but we do have teacher leaders, we have a lead teacher in every school, we have lots of opportunities, I don't disagree with you about coaching, I came from an extremely robust coaching, and if you were here, and I know you weren't, but if you were here during my interview process, I talked largely about coaching, and about my experience with working with coaches, but I, we also have a plan in place, and I think to have coaching, it requires an understanding on the part of the building leaders, it understands what the coaching mission and philosophy is, it understands what the role of a coach is, and I don't think we're in a position, quite honestly, to have coaches in every school next year. And it would. But I don't disagree with you, that it could be, that is a long-range goal, or a short-long-range goal, and I believe firmly in the method of coaching, and it is something that we are working towards, something that we have been working towards all year, with the current coaches we have in place, and some of the professional development that we are doing.
I would guess that over the next several years, the only way that's going to get paid for is slightly larger class sizes, but much more support to teachers from teacher coaches.
There's lots of ways that that might get paid for, either through some of our federal grants that we, that we have.
I'm sorry.
There's lots of ways that that might be paid for, I don't know that this is a conversation we need to have tonight, I think that's a conversation for, for maybe next year's budget, quite honestly, if that's something that we're looking, and then, if I was to put my hat on as assistant superintendent for teaching and learning, those are some things that I would certainly want to bring forward, when I think about work that I'd like to see happening here in the district, but I don't think it's a conversation for, for right now.
I, I think it's, I mean, I was a coach, I firmly believe in the, in the value of coaching teachers and helping them support, I also recognize the time crunch that we're in, and I think the important thing is that we, we, right now, give Mrs. Lathrop the, the support she needs in focusing on this thing, and that is, that's an important conversation we have, but I don't know if that's something we can, we should do right now, given all the other things happening, but I do want us to think, as we go forward, how do we support our teachers in our classes that are bigger, I think that will naturally be a thing that you planned for, or that is planned for this coming August.
And I don't want to, I don't want to interrupt you, but I also don't want to be an alarmist, I'm not, we're not projecting class sizes of twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, we are working within the scope of the range, that's an appropriate class size, and looking at classes that may still look at the range of somewhere between seventeen and twenty-three.
Versus.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
That's important. Okay, did, did you have any further questions for part B? All right, so we're, now we're going back to part A, if I could indulge everybody in a couple of minutes to make the edits that we talked about, and then show everyone the result, I think that would be the most efficient way to do things, I need, I haven't been able to do that while we've been talking about the other topics, so if everyone will give me a minute, cut, well.
Well, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Go ahead.
I just, I was, I've been, I've been thinking, I, I think at the beginning of paragraph three, we don't need to, I think we can just say the committee will, intends for the review, I don't think we need to say anything about the town manager.
I withdraw my previous suggestion.
Okay.
We're doing it, it's our job.
Okay.
I think we should own it.
All right, so again, if I, that's fine, I've caught that, I just want to put in everybody's suggested edits, so we can look at it, and I'll, I'll turn on change, so you can see where the changes will be. Anyone, is everybody okay with that?
Well, I think the, the one substantial thing we need to discuss then is, is just the second-to-last paragraph, right, like, I think you making some grammatical errors and keeping everything substantially the same is, is fine with me, but I just, we have to agree on the message of the last, the question was around, we want to assure the public that if staff reductions become necessary.
Oh, right, correct.
I think if we just come, agree on general message there, you can, you can do the work of handling the grammar.
All right, well, there are, there, well, there's, I'd ask for one or two quick confirmations then, on that, so, so would, would the committee agree that it's, well, staff reduction, I guess theoretically could become unnecessary if enough people took the retirement, right?
Correct.
So, that would indicate that I could still leave it the way it's originally written.
Well, if that's, then you should, it should say that the administration is pursuing a plan that we hope will make.
Staff reduction is unnecessary.
Involuntary staff reduction unnecessary.
Maybe just say it's non-voluntary staff reductions, just make it non-voluntary, because then that, without getting into the incentive program, that isn't, you're still working and finalizing.
Say, yeah, we hope that that'll be the case, and if not, you know, we'll announce it, or be, whatever, that, that we'll make that as quickly as possible.
Well, how about, if, if I might, Jim, can you, can you turn, turn this back on, so I can use my HDMI? We don't have to go through every edit, but I want to keep, the two key, this key edit and one other, I want everybody to see, thanks. So this is the sentence we're talking, we're talking about right here, so if I were to say.
I think you can just change it, we want to assure the public that if non-voluntary staff reductions, I think that keeps it simple.
There you go.
And still gives you leeway to do the incentive program.
Don't you want to say that, that the superintendent is, has a plan that may make them unnecessary, but that if?
Okay, yeah, I would, I think that's better, I personally think that's better, so, the acting superintendent, actually, I'd just say the administration, the administration brought forward a plan.
Double likely mitigate?
I, I think we're getting too much into this, because they haven't brought forward a plan yet, there's still nuances being worked out.
Working on one, yeah, all right.
If we want to get this letter out quickly, let's keep it simple.
And involuntary is probably a better word than non-voluntary, I guess it means the same thing.
Yeah, same thing.
And we will be fully transparent. Is that acceptable?
If you don't mind the reference, it's kind of like, if you're familiar with the musical Chicago, that would be Mr. Cellophane, who was in fact transparent, remember that?
All right.
I think, and you'll, so I.
The other one that I, I think is very critical, is what I put up here. In red, importantly, the school committee will present the same bottom line budget that we improved in February.
Yeah.
That's not a grammatical change, that's a new sentence, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think for town vote, just really, yeah, for, for, for vote at town meeting, or whatever the right language is.
Same bottom line budget at town meeting, yes.
Just to be technical, do we present it, or does the finance committee present it?
The town manager and the acting superintendent, what, they usually, the two go, usually they go together.
Doesn't, I, I thought the finance committee voted, and then they presented, do I not?
Their, their recommendation will be noted and announced.
Oh, we present, oh.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, but isn't it part of, I don't think, I don't, okay.
Yeah, we don't need to get into the mechanics of it.
Yeah.
So right now, if, as you finish that, we are going, we need to suspend the rules to vote on the, to vote this, and then we have to vote on this.
Did we, did you want to add that the statements, many statements were made, that in April were trained to?
A public comment, yes, sorry.
Nothing like editing on the fly.
Sorry?
Nothing like editing on the fly.
Yeah, they were saying that many statements were made during public comment, right? During public comment.
And then I think we were going to change April seventeenth to.
Eighteenth.
Right, when the select board agenda came up, yeah.
Down here, yep.
You were going to take out the offsets part of that sentence?
Yes, one second, that was something about the select board agenda, Alyssa?
No, you don't need to put that in, no, just.
Oh, okay, and, yeah, we were going to strike these words here. I'm a regular mouse guy, I don't like the. Like so. Yes? I think the rest of these are, are small grammatical things. Got that already?
Okay, so I move to approve the letter to the school families and citizens of North, we have to suspend the rules first before we put in the motion?
You have to suspend the rules to, oh, I don't know.
I thought you had to do the motion, and then vote to suspend, and then vote on the motion.
I think that's correct, but before we do that, just want to remember, just this, one more thing up here, is this sentence here still okay?
It is not punitive and without prejudice, you've got to add that.
Thank you.
Into the next sentence.
Into the next sentence, right before I move.
Yeah, punitive and without, punitive.
And is without prejudice.
And without prejudice?
And is without prejudice.
And is without prejudice, like so, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so I move to approve the letter to school committee families and citizens of North Andover regarding the school committee budget, as we have amended during our public meeting tonight.
Okay, so we're second.
Second.
Okay, so motion's made and seconded, is there any further discussion?
No.
Sorry?
No, just that the assumption is that you'll give a good proofread and not change anything substantial.
Yeah. We can count on that, so, do we now need to suspend the rules?
Sure, I move that we suspend the rules to take a vote on the letter.
And I will second that myself, so any discussion on, on that, so if none will vote on suspending the rules, we're voting on suspending the rules.
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Ed? Ed, is he yes?
Yes.
Thank you, Kelly?
Yes.
Sorry, and the chair votes yes, so that's, we've now suspended our rules, so that we are able to vote on, on the first motion, which has been made and seconded, any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none, seeing none, we'll vote, we'll go this way, Kelly?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Alyssa?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, so the letter will go out first thing tomorrow, or I'll get it to Michelle, so that it goes out, all right, I think that concludes our agenda for this evening, except for public comment, if anyone would like to come and make a public comment.
I would like to.
Please.
And I apologize, I just got Pam's, I'm a teacher in North Andover, my name is Jean Karen, I grew up in North Andover, I'm a product of the North Andover public.
Can you just state your name and address?
Yes.
For the record, thank you.
Jean Karen, Twenty Middlesex Street, North Andover, Mass.
Thank you.
I'm a taxpayer, I'm also a teacher here in North Andover, I have been teaching for thirty-one years, in fact, Pam and I started about the same time, I'm one of the teachers that you're talking about, who is looking, you know, I still have a couple more years until retirement, but I just want to speak and say a couple of things.
Sure.
Teachers go into teaching for the love of children, and I have stayed in this town, I have a class size of twenty-seven this year, and I love my job, and I want to stay teaching in my job, I feel like the TAs we're talking about, the teachers that we're talking about, they work really, really hard, and I just want to speak on behalf of the teachers here, and as a taxpayer here, because I am paying taxes in this town, and I was a product of this town, I went to the Kittredge School, the middle school, and the high school, and I had some really great teachers, and that's what I aspire to be, and that's what I wanted to give back to this town, to make a difference in the lives of students, and that's what a lot of my colleagues want to do, and that's what a lot of these TAs do, and all these people that you're speaking about tonight, so I strongly consider when you're talking about these numbers, and you're talking about these teachers, these are people that go into work every single day, and are making a difference, so I strongly suggest that the school committee, and Pam is being a fellow teacher, really consider, and maybe look at other options, and look at the budget, and the transparency of the budget, the curriculum, look at what we're spending in all different areas, and not just limit it to the teachers, because a lot of the teachers have been very dedicated over the years, and it might sound like a nice, easy way to give them an out, but for those teachers that go in every single day and love what they do, it really isn't, and I just want to make that known, so I'm speaking tonight on behalf of all of the teachers who love kids and go to school every day to make a difference, TAs, teachers, they work really, really hard, so if there's something that the school committee and Superintendent Lathrop can look into, and other ways of our spending, and looking at the budget, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any, anyone else, yes, please, thank you.
Tim Seibert, West Broad Street Road. Two things, the first is on the model for the buyouts, I would wonder if you've really, really poked at the model from a bunch of different directions, to make sure that there's no scenario under which this is a bad deal for us, you know, one example could be, I'm not quite sure what the consequence is, if you get less than seven hundred thousand, but let's say you get a whole bunch of new teachers, and you only get three hundred fifty thousand, what does that do, because the new teachers are going to be replaced by, by new teachers, and there's really no salary benefiting, so I, I wonder like where the breaking points are, and how catastrophic or bad they are, another is, what if you get a flood of people, you know, and now you have to go out in the market, and you have to hire fifty teachers, I don't know how good the market is, so, I would just poke the model from all directions, I, I, I don't know if it breaks, and when it breaks, but I'd encourage you to do so. Second thing is on the budget for FY twenty-six, and it's kind of like what Jean was saying, I hear, you know, from Mr. Moskovich, that, you know, one way or another, there's going to be more input and oversight, and perhaps even authority, from the school committee, you guys are going to figure that out in the future, strongly encourage it, I would also encourage, as you're building the budget, get more input from the teachers, I think that certainly, one of the things we learned during the contract negotiations, was they absolutely felt that they had no control or input over what was going in the budget, so, not only top-down oversight after it's been crafted, but bottoms-up input in terms of building budget, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else?
Helen Picard, four four seven Waverly Road, I'm heartened to see all of you working together tonight, all of you around this table, although one is absent, I certainly would have liked to see this level of deliberations and collaboration prior to, or instead of suspending the superintendent. As you know, the minutes of April twenty-fifth are not available, I'm not sure you voted to suspend your rules to affirm Dr. Gilligan's suspension, tonight's agenda lists the first read and vote of your letter, but does not. Tonight's agenda lists the first read and vote of your letter, but does not mention suspending the rules for this vote. I know you did suspend the rules, but it is not in your agenda. I also heard a motion tonight, and I recognize that Ed's a learner, but there was no mention of the need to suspend the rules before that motion was withdrawn. I hope you will continue to be diligent with two reads before you vote, and with two deep leadership in setting your agendas. Regarding your letter, I wonder if you had communicated within hours of suspending Dr. Gilligan last Tuesday, rather than a week later, if you could have prevented inaccuracies from the start. I do find it unnecessary and distasteful that you address public comment as inaccurate in your letter. I hope you'll focus on your own actions, instead of the actions of others. I received no acknowledgement of my email communications to this committee. I've heard the same from others in our community, who emailed the chair or the committee in the past week. That would perhaps be a good venue for you to address any inaccurate statements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment? All right, none, hearing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, motion adjourned, made in seconded, that one's not discussable, so we'll vote. Joe?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Alyssa?